Good evening and welcome to B News Live Election Coverage 2024. My name is Alan Foles and I'm here together with Nikki Cadlec of Burlington Buzz and Sidney Bowles of B News. I should point out that this is our 35th year of coverage, which is quite a milestone. Tonight, we're going to go through all of the results and after that, we'll be talking with some of the candidates. I'm going to begin by going through what's at stake on the ballot. On the main ballot, we have uncontested races. First is moderator. We had two candidates, Bill Byer, the incumbent, and Adam Sinessi, a challenger. The select board, there were two seats on the ballot. Joe Morandi is the incumbent and we had two challengers, Brad Bond and Sarah Colley. School committee, there was one three-year seat with two candidates. Martha Simon is the incumbent and Megan Nowicki, the challenger. Housing Authority is a little tricky. There were two separate positions on the ballot. There was a three-year term with two candidates running for it, Walter DeCoste and Eileen Sickler. There was also a five-year term that is uncontested. The incumbent, Richard Howard, is running. In addition to that, there are races in five of the seven precincts for town meeting. And also, there were other positions on the ballot that we'll get to a little later. Assessor, library trustee, Board of Health, Recreation Commission, and Shawshank Tech. All right, I think we have the results and we are ready to go. We'll start with moderator.
All right, so before we get into it, yeah, thank you to everyone for being here. Thanks to our hosts and thanks to those who voted this election season. It's not always easy to get out, but it is how our democracy functions. So... Byer succeeded. He won that race against Adam Sinessi with 2,055 votes. Challenger Adam Sinessi had 1,413 votes. We will actually be speaking with Adam Sinessi in just a few minutes, but first, I just want to mention our select board candidates as well. There were two candidates running, or excuse me, three candidates running for two positions. And the incumbent, Joe Morandi, kept his seat. He had 2,051 votes. And challenger Sarah Colley also won an additional seat with 2,128 votes. Bradford Bond was also challenging. He was not successful with 1,652 votes. So, we have actually Adam Sinessi here. He was not successful in his challenge for the moderator position. Adam, thank you so much for being with us.
Thanks for having me.
Adam, not the outcome you expected tonight, but do you have any thoughts or anything to say about your supporters?
Yeah, of course. So, I'm extremely, you know, I want to say that I'm proud of the campaign that I ran. We kept it very clean and we ran an issues-driven campaign. And I want to thank my wife in particular, all the time that you saw me out campaigning. That meant she was holding down the fort with the kids at home and I appreciate that very much. And I also want to thank my daughter, Alariah, who was my best surrogate and supporter on the campaign trail. She was out there all day with me or much of the day today and she's been along with me throughout the campaign. I want to thank all of the voters that came out, whether you supported me or you didn't support me, thanks for being part of the process. Thank you for the many town meeting members who were supportive along the way and the people who let me put their signs in their lawns. And I appreciate all of you and thank you.
Adam, I actually, I know you brought your daughter here today. What do you hope she takes from watching you campaign and also additionally from watching you not succeed at something? Because that's an important lesson, too.
Well, I think she's caught the political bug and she enjoys it very much and I hope, I don't want to push her into this, but I want her to go on to do whatever she wants to do when she gets older and it's time. I appreciate her interest in this very much and I hope she watches the way that I campaigned and the people who supported me campaigned and that we ran a positive campaign. And I hope she always stays positive and I hope that even though I wasn't successful, hopefully that I can set a good example to her and that you don't always succeed in life, but you get back up when you fail.
All right, and it looks like you have still kept your town meeting seat, so you're going to continue in town meeting for the next three years.
I will still be around.
Any other plans in the future?
I'm not ruling anything out.
Great.
Yeah, I think by being part of the process and challenging on a couple of different occasions, I think that keeps the incumbents honest and hopefully it ensures just better government all around.
Great.
Yeah, the process grows scale when there's no competition.
All right, Adam Sinessi, thank you very much for being with us and yeah, all the best in your future endeavors, town meeting related and otherwise.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
So, yeah, should we turn to some more results?
I think we go next. School committee up next.
All right, school committee's up next. This was a very, very, very tight race and challenger Megan Nowicki actually came away with the seat with 1,796 votes while Martha Simon had 1,706 votes. So really, just a very, very small gap in between those races. And we have Martha here. Hi, Martha.
Hi.
Again, not the outcome you were hoping for tonight, but you know, what are your thoughts and reflection?
Well, this was my first contested race and I want to thank all the voters who did support me. There were a lot of people who supported me. I want to thank all those people who looked at my record and said, "This is the person we want to help lead our schools." I'm very humbled and grateful about, I don't know which camera I'm supposed to be looking at, which one, over here? I'm very humbled and grateful to all the people who supported me, who came up to me and told me that they valued the work I've done on the school committee. I'm grateful for all the help I had. I had a fabulous campaign team and then I had all the people who put lawn signs out, who, you know, just all the things that you need to run a campaign. And it was very gratifying that there were people I didn't know who came to me and said, "I want to help you keep your seat on the school committee." So I'm just very honored and grateful for that. I, you know, again, my campaign team was really fabulous, so.
Martha, you have been on the school committee for a really kind of incredible period of time. Looking back, I know it's the moment of, so you're going to be doing a lot of reflecting, I'm sure, in the coming weeks, but looking back on your tenure on the school committee, are there things that you feel the most proud of?
I feel like I helped move the district forward in terms of welcoming and accepting all of the students that we have in our district. We have a much more diverse population of students than we used to have. I don't think, we are certainly not where we need to be. I feel like we've made steps in the right direction to make our schools a place where every child feels that they belong, that they feel safe regardless of their religion or their race or their gender or any of those other categories of special needs kids. We've expanded our offerings for students with different abilities and challenges. I, you know, I'm very proud of that work. I'm the person who got composting started and, you know, food waste causes, you know, 25% of the greenhouse gas emissions in Massachusetts. So we need to start making, accepting that there's a real problem in our environment and our climate and we need to make progress. And I feel like I helped push the school district to move. I'm the guiding force behind the new sustainable Fox Hill building that we're planning and hopefully a new sustainable or renewed sustainable high school. So I'm very proud of that. You know, I feel like we've kept up with the evidence-based instructional needs that our students have.
Okay. Any final thoughts before we leave?
I didn't accomplish everything I want to. We aren't where I would like us to be and I was hoping to have more time to help push the district and move the district and support the teachers. I'm disappointed and I wish the new school committee well and continuing to make the work, to make Burlington Public Schools a place that is a place of belonging and achievement. And I, there's lots of other places in the world to make progress and to help move things forward, so I'm looking forward to doing something new.
Yeah, Martha, last question before we let you go. You do have some ideas for what you might want to do with your energy now, so what are you thinking?
Well, I actually feel wide open. The climate needs help. Diversity needs help. Equity needs help. Those are the two I focus on a lot. Maybe I can help other boards in town and so we'll see.
All right, thank you very, very much for being with us.
Thanks for your service to the town all these years, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, shall we continue with some of the results? Okay, so we're going to talk about housing authority. Again, as Alan explained, there were two different roles on housing authority that were up for election and one was uncontested and that's Rich Howard, who came away with 2,518 votes. But the contested election is, was for the three-year seat and it was Walter DeCoste with 1,203 votes and then Eileen Sickler took that away with 1,886 votes. So congrats to Eileen.
This was a really interesting race, Nikki. Walter DeCoste was appointed to the position late last year, I think, and so this was him running for the seat that he had then been appointed to. So it was really interesting to see that debate happen. I was also interested to see that he chose not to come to some of the debates that we held in the forums and so I wonder, you know, we'll never know exactly why people cast their ballots, but it was interesting to see that Eileen Sickler did come away with that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I saw lots and lots of signs for Walter DeCoste, but I never got to meet him. I never got to talk to him, so unfortunately.
All right, we have another guest in the studio.
Brad Bond, thank you so much for being here.
Well, it's, I wish it were slightly better circumstances, but the campaign, I had sworn for years and years and years I would never run for townwide election and I broke that promise to myself and you know what? Despite the loss, it was a good experience.
So what did you, what do you feel like you gained from that experience?
Um, wow, it's just, I really appreciated all the support from the community. As you guys know, I've listed all my volunteer involvement in the town over the many years and, but boy, my family and I have really made a lot of friends and they really came out and supported and I just feel very thankful and grateful for that.
Any messages for the, messages of encouragement or support or suggestions for the other candidates?
Oh, well, I've already chatted with both of them out there and I said, "Well, better you than me, guys." The work is on them, but not to say I don't have a lot on my plate still. I'll still, I'll still have ways and means and I've been on the BCAT, the Board of BCAT here forever and so I'll look forward to continuing with that and help out as much as I can.
Is there anybody you'd like to acknowledge before you go tonight?
Absolutely. My wife and daughter have put in yeoman's work over the past few months and I've had a campaign committee that's done a tremendous amount and I'm very thankful for all the work they put in and who knows, we may try it again.
All right, fantastic. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much for joining us, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, what do you say we go through some of those other uncontested races that still have an implication for the town?
Right, assessor, we had the first one.
Yeah, so here in our assessor race, this was a three-year position, there was one person running for this. Paul Sheehan came away with 2,657 votes. In our library trustees race, we had two folks running for two, three-year positions. Suzanne Russell and Kevin Sheehan, of course, both came away with those seats.
Both incumbents, I believe, right?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. In the planning board race, this was actually really interesting. We had a couple of candidates who filed paperwork but didn't, or took out papers but didn't return them or who ended up dropping out. So Tony Anatola ended up being uncontested in that planning board race. She ended up coming away with that five-year seat with 2,528 votes. And then we're going to have a new face on the Board of Health. We had Andrea Sheehan and Marwa El Sabahi both take on new three-year positions on that board.
Wait, Andrea is an incumbent, is that right?
Yes, you're right, excuse me. Yep, Andrea's an incumbent and Marwa El Sabahi will be new. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And then Recreation as well, David Norden will have that three-year uncontested seat.
Okay. All right, we have another guest in the studio.
Hello, Sarah Colley.
Hi, Sarah Colley. Congratulations, brand new face on the select board. How does it feel?
It feels wonderful. It feels great and I'm very happy with the results. You know, when I was asked throughout this campaign how I thought the results would end up, I said every single time, "I have no idea." And this sort of surpassed my expectations and I'm really happy and grateful to the Burlington community for coming out and voting. So just thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So what are you really the most excited about for this new seat for you?
I'm just excited to get to work. Our first meeting is on Monday and I'm excited to sit behind the desk and listen to, you know, I've watched many select board meetings from BCAT or in the room, but now I get to be behind the desk, listen to people, speak for people and, you know, just bring Burlington into the next era.
Sarah, did you, this is, I feel like this is a ridiculous question, but did you have to like block Monday night off on your calendar with a question mark? Like, how do you even plan for that?
No, 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 no. I was not looking past today in any aspect of my life. This was it. But now I can finally breathe and yeah, I'm looking forward to Monday night.
So you, Sarah Colley, new face on the select board, you made a name for yourself, I think it's fair to say, in the last maybe year or so on the issue of the Windview Heights II development, but that's not the only issue that you've been passionate about. Are there, you know, a couple of things that you're really excited to get to work on starting on Monday?
Yeah, I'm excited to work with our town administration and our economic development director at looking at the vacancies in our commercial space. I know this is like really boring stuff, but like this is what I'm excited about. Working with Melissa and Paul and John and, you know, the team over there on how we could address that issue. Also, just things like housing in general. I know I made a name for myself going against a housing development, but I think there are better ways that we can approach it. So just collaborating with other boards in town and making Burlington the best place it can be.
Great. Anybody you'd like to speak to?
Yeah, I have a ton of people to thank and I forgot my little paper, so I'm going off my phone, I apologize. But first and foremost is my family. Tony, my husband, and my kids, Desmond, Truman, Ellen, and Violet. I'm going to get a photo. Anyway, if they're watching this right now, they're going to make fun of me. Anyway, my in-laws, they were amazing and my mom and my sisters. Second, Burlington voters, thank you so much for coming out today. The weather was horrendous. There was a lot of people who voted early as well, which is amazing that they took advantage of that. Amy, our town clerk and her team, they, you know, pulled off a flawless election as they usually do. I also want to thank Burlington Buzz and BCAT. You guys provide an amazing service to this community. You have no idea how many conversations I had with people where they said, "I read your candidate profile, I watched the debate, I, you know, listened to the Buzz podcast." There were so many times and I was just so grateful that that is out there for the community. I want to thank the candidates up and down the ticket. This is not an easy thing to do, to step up and run for something, especially Joe and Brad. Thank you all for, you know, running a great campaign. And on that note, my campaign team, I was really green coming into this whole thing, so I relied on a lot of people who are much smarter than me in how to do this because it's not easy. So thank you so much. You all know who you are. That was a lot of hours and I'm really, really grateful. And just anyone who ever reached out with encouraging words, offered to host a sign, hold signs, make phone calls, send texts, I'm just so proud and grateful to represent the community. Thank you.
All right, Sarah Colley, thank you very, very much for being here and congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, do we have the percentage of the votes?
Yeah, we sure do. This is kind of remarkable, Alan. You actually did yeoman's work calculating the percentage of votes cast, the percentage of eligible voters who voted in the last couple of years of elections. So I'm going to cheat off your paper here if that's all right.
Sure.
In the last couple of years, I mean, going back to 2018, the turnout was, you know, 13.8%, 16%, 16%, 15%, 15.3% last year. This year blew that out of the water. 21% of eligible voters came out to vote in this election, which, again, when you're talking about, you know, total turnout, of course, we'd love to see 100%, but that's, 21% is not nothing and it's significantly higher than in the last couple of years.
It's been a particularly bad day.
Exactly, on a pretty rainy, cold April day. So yeah, to everyone who came out and cast a vote, you really showed that you had something to cast your ballot for and I think the candidates this year gave people something to believe in.
Right, right.
I'll also say, when I was going through the uncontested races later, earlier I missed one, there was a Shawshank Tech position open and Stacy Huberty was able to take that one away.
Okay, we have another guest in our studio. Welcome.
Hi, Megan Nowicki, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Not too bad. So you, very close race, but you walked away with it and how are you feeling tonight?
I'm feeling very happy, very thankful, very thankful to everyone who's supported me, to my family, to my husband, to my children. Your support has meant the world to me and I couldn't be happier. I'm very excited to get started and I'm just thrilled.
Great. What are you, what are you most excited about for, you know, sort of hitting the ground running, starting on Tuesday with your first meeting?
Well, I feel very prepared. You know, I've attended every school committee meeting since 2019, so I feel like it's, it won't be a lot of ramp-up time for me.
What are some of the issues that you're really excited to get to work on?
Literacy and evidence-based curriculum improvements, for sure. And, you know, just getting to understand at a deeper level what goes on at the school committee and seeing how I can impact change.
Megan, what do you feel like you learned from people who you spoke to on the campaign, from doing the campaign itself that you'll take with you into this term?
Wow, that's a great question. You know, I've learned that people really care about, you know, people that listen to them and that care about their feelings and about issues and that, you know, act on those feelings and I think that it's really important and that's really something that drove me to be the candidate that I am.
Okay, I think that'll do it for, thank you very, very much for coming on and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, we have time to run through a few of the precincts.
Yeah, let's do it.
Start from the top.
All right, Nikki, I'm going to start with precinct, precinct one, all right? Sound good? Okay. So, we're going to go through some of our precincts here. We had six open seats on precinct one with seven candidates. So I'll read through all these names here from the precinct one seats. The candidate who was not successful was Sinia Salim. That was the seventh candidate who got the least votes. The candidates who were successful were Bill Boyden, Michael Hardy, Adam Sinessi, David Waddilla, and Peter Abaskaroon and Jamie Greitzer. Those are the precinct one town meeting members who will be on town meeting for our May coming up. There was also an additional precinct one seat that was open. Florence Leonie came away with that seat uncontested. And again, I should say, I'm doing my best with these names. I apologize if I mess any of them up. I know that that's a very, a very critical one. In precinct two, we're going to go on to precinct two here. This was not a contested precinct. The candidates here were Jeremy Harrington, Michelle Papagno, Marna Saltman, and Kimberly Trainer, as well as TJ Flynn. And for precinct three, there were eight candidates for six open seats. The successful candidates here were Joanne Frastachi, Stephen Marchesi, Mildred Nash, Paul Gerard Noonan, Richard Debona, and, yeah, excuse me, those were the six names. The two that were not successful in their campaigns were Lourdes Janau and Melinda Meyer.
All right, hi, we have another guest in our studio. We'll turn to Joe Morandi.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe, how are you?
Fantastic, how are you?
Not doing too bad. So one more, one more term in office? This is going to be number four for you?
Number four, yeah, number four.
All right, and how are you feeling tonight?
Exhausted, like all the candidates, you know? Everybody out there is pretty tired, it's a long day, weather wasn't great, but overall I feel fantastic. I'm in for another three years, so like I said, one of my speeches, I'm ready to leave. So thank God, some people listened and I got in.
All right, well, what are you most excited to tackle in the next?
Police.
I didn't even have to ask you that question. I could have, I could have told you, right?
We've already had the conversation.
We've already talked about this.
Police Department, I can't wait to get that building out of here and put up a new building for those guys. It's a pretty bad place, so we got the new candidate, a new select board member coming in, she'll be ready to gung ho right off the get-go, so like everybody is when they first start and...
And then you beat them down, right?
I wouldn't use that term at all. You just kind of realize like, okay, wait a minute, I'm not involved in the school department, I'm not involved in the rec department, I'm not involved in this. So I really don't have a say in those, so like I've said in my past, just stay in your lane.
I mean, do you, do you learn something new when you, when you campaign, when there's a contested race, when you sort of have to hone your...
I learn something new every time there's a meeting. If you think you know it all, it takes a solid year, in my opinion, it takes a solid year to understand everything that goes on with the Board of Selectmen. And when you have a race, you understand like, okay, this is about running a race that you want to continue your seat. And thank God that I get in again. I'm really, really happy. When I started this nine years ago, it was a new DPW bond, a new highway division, a new fire station, and a police station. The school wasn't involved at that point, so three of those are done, got one left. Know what I mean? And then we'll work on the school and this building, this lovely high school we have.
Joe, I want to ask kind of a difficult question.
Jesus, now?
This race was difficult for you. You had a, you had a really difficult death in the family in the middle of the campaign that I know was really important to you. Your mother passed away very recently. I know this is difficult, but I just want to acknowledge that loss and give you a chance to say anything about campaigning in her honor or bringing her memory onto this new term.
Yeah, what can I say? Right in the middle of my campaign, my mom passed away, who is, any guy in the world's going to tell you they're a mama's boy and I'll be the first one to tell you, "I'm a mama's boy." My mother's a world to me. I lost my father two years ago, I lost my mother this year. It's been very, very hard with her, all the disabilities that she had, to keep her campaign going. I had my two angels on my shoulder. I had both of them on my shoulder and I really believed that they were there watching me and I prevailed and I have my seat back. So I thanked them as soon as I heard the word. So I wore a pin and we gave away my mother's service and I had it on all day long. Don't ask me why I took it off, but I did. But anyway, she's been on my shoulder all day, so thank you for asking that and thanks for almost making me cry.
Well, Joe Morandi, congratulations on keeping your seat.
Thank you very much. I would like to say one thing, I really want to thank everyone that helped me out, naturally, that's no question, but BCAT's been great. Amy Warfield is a rock star. She's the one that really, really puts this whole thing together and her staff, everybody that's down there, so that's what I really got to thank. All the podcasts, like the other candidates just said, I want to congratulate them because nobody has any idea what it's like to put yourself out there in the public and sometimes the scrutiny that you get involved with and the few things that people say, you have to sit back and go, "I can't say nothing because I want this seat so bad, I can't say anything." But now that I have three years, maybe I would say a few things. I've never been shy.
You have not.
No.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Joe.
Thank you.
Joe Morandi, one more term.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Burlington. We may have had a little bit of a problem on precinct three, so we're going to go back and do that again.
Yeah, sure did. I apologize. This is real live elections, folks. This is, we printed these, we got the, I ran upstairs with the paperwork second before we came online, so I apologize for that error. In precinct three, the two candidates who were not successful were Jeffrey David Needham and Lourdes.
Do you want to do precinct four or is that, do you want to wait until...
Well, let's talk about, there's one more actually, just a one-year seat that was available in precinct three.
Oh, that's right, there was a precinct three. So let's do that.
Yeah, and look at that and I'm just, I'm just doing my numbers here. This was a contested race, yeah. Do you have your numbers there already?
Yeah, I do, yeah. Sharon Laurie was able to take on that seat. She was campaigning against William McCarthy. This is actually a really interesting one. I was interested to watch this race. Sharon Laurie spoke at town meeting recently about an issue with, it was the Herb Chambers, Kia of Burlington was looking to redevelop their business there on Cambridge Street and her house was right on the opposite side. She was very vocal, very active in campaigning against that and her campaign was successful, that was not able to move forward.
Yeah, very close vote on town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be really interested to speak with her and see if that was a motivating issue for her to get more involved. And now she will be more involved, she'll be there right on town meeting.
Yeah, sounds great. And speaking of town meeting, our town moderator, William Byer, you have, you have come away with a seat once more. This is going to be your eighth one-year term in office.
Exactly.
I'll do it again next year, too.
Well, how does it, how does it feel?
It feels really good, to be honest. Obviously, this is the first time I've been challenged since my first one. And it was, it was a difficult race. I always thought that I had done a good job for seven years, and it's gratifying that some other people think so, too.
It, it was a contested race. There were moments where I, it felt, it felt personal, right? It's hard to, yeah.
A little tense, it was a little tense, yeah.
I think it was very personal for my opponent.
So, okay, so, so, I mean, the issues, the issues really were about, it wasn't, I mean, the moderator's seat, we've talked about this, is that it's not a, a political position, really. It's more about maintaining order, following the rules. And so your, your opinions are sort of, they take backseat. But is there anything that you'll take from this campaign and apply moving forward?
Well, this, it's been a seven-year learning process, and it continues. There's always something that comes up at, at meetings that challenge you, and you learn another trick on how to keep things moving. I suppose I've learned a few more tricks on how to campaign and, and keep that moving. So I'll keep doing what I've been doing, at least for another year.
Anybody you'd like to speak out to or thank while you're, while you're here with us?
I have to thank my wife Kathy. She was my rock, kept me moving. Sometimes it was not my favorite thing to be a campaigner. You know, I'm a geologist. I talk to rocks. Getting out and always talking to people is not, not my strength. But anyway, I got to thank her, Frank Monaco and Mike Hardy, who were my campaign manager and treasurer, and a whole lot of other people who, who helped along the way. It was kind of too numerous to, to name, but they know who they are, and I'm truly thankful for their friendship.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Bill Byer, thank you very much for stopping by, and congratulations on your success.
Thank you. And Alan, I look forward to seeing you at the next Mass Moderators Association meeting.
Hi, Bill, thank you.
All right. Let's move on to precinct four, town meeting members.
All right, let's talk about this. Okay, so in precinct four, there were six three-year seats available, and there were seven candidates. And so the candidate that wasn't successful this time around was Wayne Root. He had 204 votes. And then the candidates that were successful were Nancy Bonacera, Tamara. To precinct number five, we had, we had eight actual candidates here for this, for six three-year seats. And the people who took away those seats were Pat Angelo, Thomas Carlson, Christine Conceition, Mark Donahue, Christopher Murphy, and Carl Foss.